Call to order, the committee of the whole meeting of Bellingham City Council. We've got three items this afternoon before moving into a budget work session. So we'll try and get through these as quickly as we can. We're running a little bit behind this afternoon. The first is a Futurewise presentation of a grant opportunity. And give me a second here, Ryan, I'll introduce the subject and then turn it over to you. The local chapter of Futurewise, a statewide land use planning organization, will present information regarding the grant opportunity to further inform the city's comprehensive plan update. The city and Futurewise will partner together on a study identifying infrastructure needs in the Squalicum Creek watershed. Futurewise received a grant from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration to conduct this study. And I will turn it over to Ryan Erickson from Futurewise for a presentation.
Great, thank you for having me here today. I'll kind of speed this up so you guys can get kind of back on schedule.
Thank you.
We'll see a high level presentation right now.
Is your mic on, Ryan? Just checking.
Is it on?
Okay, great. Yeah. It's got a good read, so it'll be fine.
Point it straight up, is that louder?
I think that's, yeah, that's fine. It'll be good.
There we go. Okay, so we got a grant, a secret grant for doing some work here in Wacom County. It's going to be a pilot program which hopefully will be replicated to other Seattle City cities throughout the, and towards the south, in the Seattle area when we're done. The idea is to look at the movement of people, water, and wildlife in an urban context. The location, the comprehensive plan policies and regulations that will come out of this process will be more citywide. Our prioritized project list will be more detailed on one watershed such as Squalicum Creek. So the location will actually be throughout the greater Bellingham area. These are the elements I'll discuss today. This will be a partnership between the city and Futurewise. There'll be a community engagement process. We'll create a unique public outreach program with the city for Bellingham. We will conduct some watershed assessments and land use patterns, look at policy regulations and prioritized projects, and then come up with incentives for homeowners, landowners, and for funding sources. The partnership. For this party to be successful, we need to have a really close relationship with the city. We need to co-identify stakeholders and technical advisory committee members. We will be working with city to gather data, technical assessments, community outreach, and also prioritizing the projects. The stakeholder groups will be involved in reviewing these projects, reviewing some of the data we get from the community outreach engagement pieces. Technical advisor committee will be looking at the science and our watershed assessments to make sure that we're on the right track for an area specific to the city of Bellingham. The important role is to identify the priorities, projects to improve community services, improve water quality, and enhance wildlife and habitat. The community engagement, these are some things we've done down in the city of Seattle. This is a green festival, and down here is a speak-out, which is basically a tent setup. And you have engagement pieces here. People are writing a list of projects that they would like to see them see to Seattle. This child here is actually drawing pictures what she'd like to see on a balloon. And the idea there is to engage the younger generations as well as the older generations. So we'll be creating a unique plan specific to Bellingham. We want to look at vetting community projects, which can include complete streets for safety, improve water quality, and habitat connectivity. Now, one of the nice things about the city of Bellingham is that you guys are already, have moved in that direction. So a lot of these tasks have already been completed. So what we'll really be doing in Bellingham is taking the lessons we've learned for implementing these complete streets, or implementing stormwater retrofits, and applying them to future projects. So identifying projects in the future as opposed to, this is not really like an assessment of how well the city is doing, they've already been doing a great job currently. So assessment strategies, existing land use patterns, looking at a 50-year planning horizon to see where we'd like to go into the future, improve water quality. We'll be looking at the existing stream and nearshore health, so we'll be gathering existing data that the Natural Resource Department already has on macroinvertebrates studies. We can look at the health of the Bintec environment. We're also looking at existing water quality. We have some money too, to do some small programs as well to fill some data gaps. So we'll be identifying all the gaps in the data for this one watershed and working to solidify a good process going forward. Indicators, obviously Bintec index, habitat, habitat quality. Again, Bellingham's already moving forward on a great project right now, which will be coming out hopefully next week on the existing habitat data gap analysis, which is a huge thing that we'll be doing and hopefully coming up with strategies to fill those data gaps. So what we're looking for, this is, the top one is your guys' central business district retrofit. So we'll be looking at those types of programs and applying them to Squalicum Creek watershed or any other watershed in the future, like in a phase two where we have great data sources already. And where to highlight where we can incorporate these projects. The bottom right is a complete street in the city of Seattle. It shows a protective bike lane. Again, I believe that's already in your guys' bike multimodal plans. And, so here are the outcomes. This is the important part. So looking for vetting community projects way in advance. So this would be working with the community through the city, comprehensive plan updates. It's a 50-year planning horizon, so we'll be looking at not only the current comp plan, but also kind of helping build our roadmap for future comp plan updates, which will save the city resources in the future. When you have prioritized projects, you have a favorable grant ranking with state and federal agencies, and so it improves your scoring system to get more free money, which is always good. We will develop a landowner incentive program, identify additional funding sources, and the overall goal of improving quality and habitat. And, questions?
That's great. Any questions? Michael.
Ryan, could you go back to that map at the very beginning? Is one of those Squalicum Creek watershed, the purple one maybe? I'm trying to figure out how big the watershed is, how much of our city it encompasses, and how far it extends beyond our city. Yeah, that one.
So, you're, right here is the city boundary. So it's about half in, half out.
Oh, that green there is Squalicum Creek watershed?
Yeah, this is the Squalicum Creek watershed.
What about the part that's outside the watershed? Do we look at that at some lesser level, or is the data going to cover that as well?
I'm working with the county as well.
And Jack?
So, Ryan, my understanding is that you already have the grant?
Correct.
Okay, and how much is it for?
For $215,000.
Okay, and what are the match requirements?
There are none, we already covered that.
Really? Okay. And who's it coming from?
Coming from the match grant, or from the grants from NOAA.
From NOAA, okay. And it's to improve Puget Sound?
Right. So they wanted to do pilot projects to, for other sailor cities, and they chose Bellingham.
Okay.
But yeah, we, no outstanding money sources coming from the city except for staff resources needed at the beginning to gather all the data. And then the stakeholders, and we'll be meeting every other month. So seven meetings total, so we'll have some city staff time associated with that. I would direct, you know, those kind of questions to Mayor Kelly.
And what's the overall timeframe then?
So we currently have 15 months to complete the project, and we've already been afforded an extension because they were late giving me the money. So we've got a little bit of wiggle room.
Okay.
Anything else for Ryan? Nope. See, none. Thank you very much, Ryan. Very exciting project. Moving on, we have a discussion this afternoon of our city-specific legislative agenda. Staff will present items for discussion and possible inclusion in a city of Bellingham's specific legislative agenda, which is intended as a complement to the existing joint legislative agenda shared with the Port of Bellingham and Wacom County. And I'm turning it over to Brian Heinrich and Ben Buckholz to share with us this afternoon.
Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. You'll see in your packet the previously adopted legislative objectives that we share with the port and the county. And in addition, the second attachment is a city-specific legislative agenda based on some comments we received from council members. Both Michael and Pinky provided some input, and I talked to Mark about the tax credit for multifamily buildings. It's an energy and efficiency improvement tax incentive program. But I think I draw your attention to a couple of things. One, the goal statement, we're looking at this city-specific agenda as complementary to what was previously adopted. And I wanted to share with you, and I wasn't able to put this in the packet, but I wanted to share with you, the Association of Washington Cities will be discussing their own legislative agenda, and I just wanted to share with you a handful of items off there that I think inform this conversation. AWC talks about maintaining existing state-shared revenue, exploring new revenue options and greater flexibility for the revenue they have. And that would include lifting the 1% property tax cap, greater authority and flexibility for REIT. In addition, their other main emphasis is maintaining and restoring funding for infrastructure. This is largely looking at the Public Works Assistance Account. Transportation funding remains at the top of the list, or near the top, and we, and Ben, I think Ben will speak to that here in a few moments. Preserving local regulatory authority over marijuana, marijuana-related revenues. And then also, how AWC phrases it, is state-imposed cost drivers. And perhaps these are best thought of in terms of things that they're requiring us to do with, but not providing us with any sort of a mechanism to fund it. So, the AWC-proposed items, I think, taken in context with our own joint agenda that was already adopted, I think helped inform what we might look at in terms of detail for the city-specific agenda. Again, you'll see on that list, supporting some transportation-related items, most notably the northbound I-5 Baker View on-ramp, which the COG has adopted as a priority as well. In speaking with Police Chief Cook, he has been working on a warrant officer designation. I provide some information there. They would essentially allow our own police department to have a, or maintain a position of warrant officer. They're not currently able to do that. I think Ben can speak to that here in a few moments as well. Again, I mentioned the housing one. And then we did include a handful of federal items that the administration has been working with our local delegation on, a handful of items that relate to rail safety measures. So that's one item. Support continued increase funding for community development block grants. That's been a long-time source of funding for programs that the city utilizes. And then also, supporting the passage of MAP 21, a federal transportation bill. So unless there's any questions, I'd like to kick it over to Ben. He has a couple of comments he'd like to make, and we'd certainly entertain any questions or comments.
Okay.
Well, it's good to see everybody again today. A lot of your time in Olympia was valuable last session. I would encourage you all to come down again in January or February and join us to see the chaos that is Olympia. My name is Ben Buckholz, and I'm sure most of you have my phone number and my partner Tom McBride's phone number. If there are in-depth questions, or something that I don't know enough about, I would encourage you to call us anytime. We're available for you. We're a two-man team, so we've got a lot of ability to cover any of the questions you have. So in order to be respectful of your time, I'll keep this, I'm going to aim for under five minutes. I have a hard time shortening stuff like that. But anyway, so sort of to preface the 2015 session, sort of a preview of what the folks in Olympia are dealing with, I think to summarize it, it basically will be a very defensive session. I attended the AWC get-together last week, and somebody said that it's going to be a tough and ugly session. I think that's pretty accurate, what we're going to see, starting in mid-January. And part of the reason for that is because their revenues are now steady, but the expenses going out the door continue to increase, and that's because of caseloads and additional services, maybe that weren't expected when the budget was written. And so, in addition to that, you're seeing with our recent general election and the passing of Initiative 1351, which was the limiting class sizes, that's adding to the deficit that has already been created. 1351, I think, comes with a price tag of about $1.8 to $2 billion. As you, probably political junkies like me have been watching closely, it's up by about 15,000 votes now, so it looks like it's going to pass. I think the Seattle Times just declared that it would. So, right there, you're looking at a couple billion. We all have heard about the McCleary decision. I think Michael and I have had some conversations about that and how much funding it will take, close to another $2 billion. I think you'll sort of see a standoff maybe between one or both chambers of the legislature with the Supreme Court on the McCleary decision. And it might be the legislators that say, you know, what are you guys going to do to us? So we'll see how that plays out a little bit over session, but right there, you've got another $2 billion. So even before the members arrive in Olympia, you're looking at about a $4 billion shortfall of revenue. So that sort of sets the stage for our positioning, for the city of Bellingham, and our needs for funding, and our highest priorities, as Brian talked about. And it will be very difficult to, for one, pay for the services we already need, and two, to try and find additional funding. So that just sort of is a blanket update on session. As I'm sure you all have closely followed also, in the Senate, there's going to be a different majority than in the House. Republicans, the first time since 2004, will outright control the majority in the Senate. The Democrats will still have a small majority, lead and majority in the House, and then obviously the governor's office. So with that said, we all know how that works with political positioning, that things will make it out of one chamber, but probably not everything out of the other chamber. So we have to keep those variables in mind. I also would be remiss not to say thank you to you guys, or to at least say that I think it's created a strong force, a strong, very clear messaging in Olympia for Tom and myself, and for you guys when you come down to meet with our delegation and also with leadership, that having one joint legislative objective document creates a very clear message for legislators in Olympia. It shows that the city, the port, and the county can work together towards a common issue or solution. And that, a couple years ago, when Tom and I came to work for you guys, that was a fairly unique setup. However, over the last couple years, obviously something's been working, right? Because some of the biggest cities in the state have gone to that game plan. They now hire representatives in Olympia that are also doing common work for issues for the county group also. So I think it is a valuable, it's a valuable force. It really creates a positive negotiating tool, almost, to say that everybody is in agreement on some of these issues. So I'll just give a quick update on the transportation package, and then I'll sort of leave it for questions on other detail. But I've had several meetings with most of the leadership from both chambers over the past three to four weeks. And in terms of transportation package, it looks like originally they were looking at a 3.94 cent per gallon gas tax. It would do basically minimal projects, none of the big ones, basically. It would help with maintenance and preservation, and maybe do a project here or there. That has evolved now, over the last couple weeks, to be an 11.5 cent gas tax. That is something that we have supported, the city of Bellingham definitely has supported over the past couple years. And it looks like they're actually having some, getting some traction on that, and are looking to get that passed this session. So I think the conversation then turns to some of the top issues on our document. Rail safety would be included in that. Multimodal, non-motorized infrastructure needs are part of the conversation for the transportation package. So I think that's a very positive step in the right direction for the city and some of the, some of the needs that are, revolve around transportation funding. So I'll leave it at that. I know I haven't covered everything, but I also think went way past my five minutes. So feel free to ask any questions, and I'll try and answer them the best I can.
That's great, thanks, Ben. Any questions from council? Michael?
With regard to the legislative agenda, I appreciate every single element here, but I think it lacks specificity, and so it would be hard for Ben or anyone to know what it means. The one in law enforcement is more specific, but for example, include multimodal infrastructure funding and statewide transportation plans. That's really broad, and I think that we mean something, I would mean something in particular about that. In particular, we just approved a bike and pedestrian master plan. We're using transportation benefit district money for projects. One of the things that's difficult to do is get funding for unimodal projects when they're not automotive, just for bike or just for pet improvements, or maybe bike and pet mix. But, you know, right now you can roll it in with a street project, so I would want those sort of things built into. Personally, I think the city would benefit from that. We now have TBD monies. If there were grant programs, I think we'd be highly competitive, and we've got our match. So that's what I mean specifically. I further think specifically that public transit needs to be moved away onto a better funding mechanism. Right now it's sales tax dependent, which means it's really cyclical, and that's one of the reasons we have a TBD, is we pick up some slack. I think it'd be in Bellingham's interest if transit funding was put on a slightly different footing so that we didn't have to stay in that business any longer. So those are specifics that I would like either understood or included in our legislative agenda, if there's support.
And I think, Michael, to answer some of your concern about it, that's why specific detail like that is very helpful to Tom and myself. And we would encourage you to, you know, let's sit down and discuss that and get it in detail so that we can deliver that message, you know, for you, or come down and join us to deliver that message. I think you'll be very pleased with the fact that you have just hit several of the talking points for the transportation package that's, you know, being negotiated or worked out, or however it's, wherever it's headed. But I think you'll be pleased with what is in that. I know there's large conversation among members and debate and argument about public transit. That has been an ongoing conversation for, you know, over a decade in Olympia, so you're not alone in some of that. But that's why I say, after this presentation, I will send out our contact information again just to make sure everybody has it. But feel free, I mean, that's the detail that we want, so that our messaging is concise and clear when we meet with legislators in Olympia.
Well, I may be alone in it. I guess I'm asking the rest of the council and the administration if they agree that those are the sort of specifics that we might mean underneath multimodal.
Can I make a suggestion? Having been the recipient of people's requests, it's truly helpful to have a larger umbrella so that we don't know everything that's going to come up. And I think that Ben's suggestion of either informing our lobbyists about what are specific things you might be looking for, as long as you're all looking for them as a group or individually, you're always welcome to lobby our legislators for things that are important to you. This isn't supposed to be a limiting factor. But I know in a session like this that we need to support the defensive positions first, because getting new stuff is not going to be very, very helpful. And I think that our, having our lobbyists informed, but not having them tied down to a list of, an enumerated list of very small items is, would be, would be a problem for them.
These aren't small items, and I'm not tying anyone down to it, but if the state's going to go for the 11.5 cent version rather than the 4 cent version, then I think things like the multimodal funding would come in there. If they go to a minimal version, then yeah, we're defensive and we're just...
I mean, personally, I would suggest that the council take a position that if the state goes for an 11 cent or plus funding, that we get the flexibility of having projects and resources sent to our area. That hasn't been happening recently because they've been all going to the mega projects in the Puget Sound area. Then we could make our own decisions. But if we don't have that money coming up to Wacom County or Bellingham, all the little specifics that we might want may never get a majority vote in the House. So if you want to be a little more specific, Ben, can, we used to do this, we asked that the, that the priorities be, acknowledge the fact that other places have transportation needs and not just central Puget Sound.
That may be a better way of putting it, actually, Kelly, that it would be nice when a funding package comes forward, it does provide that local flexibility. So we could do a unimodal project if it suited our community.
And, Michael, just to address that, I think that is an advantage that we have, and when I say we, I mean council in the city of Bellingham, because we're already involved in the transportation package conversation. Like I said, I've met with senators that are the chairs of the House and Senate Transportation Committees. That's where I learned about a lot of this information, about the detail of the package. And like I said, I mean, just from the time that I started the meetings four weeks ago to last week, it's evolved into being a larger package. And so we're on the ground floor of that conversation that's taking place. So by no means do we feel tied down to anything. As, like I said to folks earlier before the meeting, basically, call us and, you know, as long as the group is in favor of it, we'll take that guidance and that detail, and that helps our messaging with leadership in Olympia. So I think you'll be pleased, and nothing's ever guaranteed in Olympia, you know that, we always talk about that, first off. But if something does get passed and goes through, non-motorized, multimodal, it'll all be in there. The infrastructure funding will be in there. So that is an advantage you have to having that conversation early and often.
And I think the flexibility is really important because we don't want to be eliminated because we've asked for this, and then all of a sudden that's not what the legislators decide to fund. So I think the keeping in touch with Ben and Tom. Tom, right now, as Ben told us, is, you know, talking to the governor about rail safety, which is one of our priorities. So we, I think our lobbyists are keyed into the things we care about, and I know that all of you are not shy in letting them know if something else comes up. But we want the most flexibility to get the resources. That's the important thing, without strings. So we can make choices that might not match up with Moses Lake, or Walla Walla, or the Peninsula, which is why it's hard when they try to do specific pots of money.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, can you keep it quick, Michael?
It has to do with rail safety and rail crossings, so I don't know if it can be that quick.
Well, can you try and make it quick?
Sure. Going to the specifics, it says increase oil take standards is one of the things we might ask for the federal level. I just want to make sure it includes also rail line inspection standards and speed limits. That was part of the discussion. If we're going to list specifics, those are other two areas. And under support passage of the federal transportation bill, the so-called MAP 21 bill... bill, I know that our own Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board in the state has identified 37 of the highest priority crossings in the state that are currently impacted by, you know, conflicts between rail and surface freight and surface transportation. And they've estimated at $1.2 billion, some of which is already funded, to fix those at-grade crossings. If the federal government has claimed jurisdiction over these crossings, then I think that should be part of the discussion at the federal level, is these crossings need fixing. You've claimed jurisdiction. You Fed should come up with ways of funding these multi, these conflicts between transportation modes when you control one of them and you control what can be done at it. So I would make, again, a more specific request. As part of MAP 21, federal support for fixing at-grade crossing problems in, you know, local communities.
So I'm going to ask, Michael, if you have more specific language you would like approved that you make a proposal to this body?
Okay.
At another time? And then if we change anything, we can send it forward? So I'm just going to, real quickly, how much more does this city legislative agenda cost? Nothing, correct? Which seems miraculous. Okay, so in addition to our priorities that we share with the port and the county, we are able to put a few other things on your radar that you watch out for us and let us know about. And that occurs at a weekly Friday check-in meeting theoretically?
That's right. So Friday mornings, I think about 7:30 or 8 o'clock before we head off to the Hill for the first committee hearings of the day. During session on Fridays, we do a check-in, and I, I don't know exactly the detail, but I think anybody's welcome to call in. I believe a couple members have, of the council have called before. I would encourage that. And just to add very briefly, there are always issues coming up during session. And just like last year with the warrant officer legislation, it was sponsored by Senator Jan Angel. There was a hearing on it, and Chief Cook came down, and we set up meetings for him and went around and handed out the documentation, went over strategy, things like that. That's why I say we're a two-man team down there, and that's very beneficial for issues that come up randomly. We encourage you, just reach out to us. If there's something a constituent is needing or wants us to work on, then talk to each other and then contact us, and we're more than happy to attack it.
That's great. Thank you very much, Ben. Anything else before we move on? Okay, seeing none. That's it. Thank you so much. We've got one more item before we move into... Wait a minute, did we need to approve that?
Kathy?
Yeah.
In interest of time, I'm just wondering to ask Brian whether or not, if we could push this to another, push the Access Bellingham discussion to another meeting, both, both the budget stuff and also your presentation.
Sure, we can move it to the 24th if you'd like.
Folks okay with that? Okay?
This is not time urgent, but we're, we're really running behind.
That's good. Thank you very much, Jack. So this just said provide direction, and I think we did that adequately on the last item. We didn't need to...
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to bump our final item from Committee of the Whole to our next meeting. That's an Access Bellingham update on, on BTB 10. So that'll happen on November 24th, I believe, is the next meeting. And so now we're going to move into a work session on the biennial budget. This takes place in the mayor's boardroom, so we'll adjourn to that space, but it's still open to anyone who would like to come participate or listen and observe.
Kathy, can we quickly approve the minutes, maybe?
Yes, and I need to ask for older new business.
There were two sets of minutes. I would like to move approval of the meeting minutes from October 27th and November 3rd.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, minutes pass. Six zero with Terry Bornham in absent. And quickly before we adjourn, is there any older new business? Pinky? Kelly, don't leave? I don't know. So, Pinky?
Just quickly, I just wanted to let everybody know that our energy plan was due for the Georgetown Energy Prize today, countrywide, November 10th is our deadline. And I wanted to thank Mark Gardner for the amazing work that he did on putting that together. Thank you for, yeah, carousing all the cats and getting all the information. So well done. Thank you for getting us into that prize.
Thanks, Pinky. That's great. Roxanne?
Just really quickly, I was thinking about the rental registration public hearing that we had, and I just have a really small plea. When we know we're going to have major public input about an issue, I just request that possibly we could move such sessions, sessions to other nights. You know, maybe another nightly meeting that's just dedicated to that exact issue, so we don't have to have people unfortunately wait all night for their issue or exhaust us to...
You mean we'd have a special meeting that was just the public hearing?
Exactly.
We've done that in the past on issues.
Good, good suggestion.
It's a small request. Thank you.
Okay, so... Before we adjourn, I'll just read this quickly. This, we're going to go convene a work session on the 2015-2016 biennial budget. There have been a number of these all fall. There will continue to be a few before we have our budget hearing, and then hopefully, fingers crossed, pass a biennial budget in late, mid-December. The remaining city departments that we're discussing today are library, public works, and fire. And that's it.